I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call.
Councilmember Irving?
Here.
Councilmember Paige?
Here.
Councilmember Fitch?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Clancy?
Here.
Councilmember Trachis?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
I move for approval of the Journal at the meeting of February 5th, 2019. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Journal's approved. We have no bid opening, so we'll move to communications.
Mr. Chair, we have no tax compromises or zoning matters this evening, so we'll move to road and bridge matters. On the road and bridge matters, item number one, second district.
Receive, file, plan, specifications, and detailed estimate of the costs be approved, and the Director of Procurement be authorized to advertise for bids as requested, and a copy of this report sent to the interested parties.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to other communications, Mr. Chair, item number one, sixth district.
Can you pass this for movement?
Sure. Next item.
Item number two, all districts.
Receive and file, same motion for item number three, and that will be the order. We should note that the report on item number three significantly reduces the available balance in the general fund. In fact, it's been reduced by $12 million from the original estimate of 2018 spend that was previously reported, and we need to take a little bit of time and understand how an additional $12 million was encumbered after the fiscal year closed. We'll be talking about that. Next item.
Item number four, all districts.
Receive, file, and county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, same motion for item number five, and that will be the order.
Item number six, fourth district.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate resolution.
So ordered.
Item number seven, fourth district.
Receive, file, refer to council, to the council as committee of the whole, and to the county counselor for review.
So ordered.
Item number eight, seventh district.
Receive, file, and refer to the county counselor, the Department of Planning, the Department of Revenue, and to the Board of Election Commissioners.
So ordered.
Item number nine, all districts.
Receive, file, and the issue is so the proposal be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. It should be noted that the contract period will begin in 2020. There was an error in the initial communication that was in the attachments.
Item number 10, second district.
Receive, file, and the matter be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number 11, third district.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 12.
Same motion, and that will be the order.
Item number 13, fourth district.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 14, fifth district.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number 15, sixth district.
Receive, file, the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Mr. Chair, if you wouldn't mind returning to item number one, please.
Item number one, sixth district.
Receive, file, and the subdivision platte approved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Add-ons?
No add-ons this evening, Mr. Chair.
Report to the county executive.
Nothing for you.
Report to special committees.
Please hold on the order of business.
So ordered. Public forum.
We have 10 speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Please come to the podium when your name is called. Give us your name and address for the record. Adjust the microphone so we can capture your remarks, and please try to keep your comments to three minutes. First speaker.
First speaker this evening is Linda Baker.
Good evening, County Counsel and County Executive Steiger. I am Linda Baker, the Chair of the County Commission on Disability, and I'm here about the ADA coordinator position. Back in 2016, I wrote a letter to County Executive Steiger for that position to be full-time. Currently, it's part-time. And recently, in November of 2018, Bill 257 was passed by the county council to fund this for full-time ADA coordination, and still, the ADA coordination position is part-time under the Department of Administration, and we would like to see this expedited. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. That issue is on the list of supplemental appropriation requests, and it's on hold. We're waiting on a plain English description of the budget transfers and budget cuts that were made to accommodate the 2019 budget, and as soon as we see those, we'll be able to consider that request.
Next one, as you said.
We're waiting on more information to consider that request that has been submitted to us.
Okay, thank you.
But we're aware of it, for sure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next speaker is Joseph Hoffman.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joseph Hoffman, and I live at 6601 Iggy Road in Afton, Missouri. I'm here to talk about the proposed zoning of the property at Tower T from commercial sporting facility to residential. I spoke before about how Afton has a greater need for green space, for a park, than it has for more houses. Afton is already one of the most densely populated areas of the county. At 4,048 residents per square mile, it's more than double the county average. Afton has very little in the way of green space or parks. There's a serious need for green space and parks for the Zet residents. Tower T meant much of that park activity, park need in a unique setting. It provided for a variety of parkour and park-like activities. And the land at Tower T provides another important feature for the residents around Tower T. It also absorbs a lot of water when it rains. Much of Tower T is high ground, ground that slopes down towards New Hampshire Road and East Yorkshire Road and East Yorkshire Drive. When it rains, that open grassy land absorbs a lot of water that would otherwise flow down to the homes on New Hampshire and East Yorkshire. Once that open land is developed, it's covered with rooftops and driveways and roads, there will be very little grass left. And so when it rains, that water won't be absorbed or run off, it'll flow down towards the homes on New Hampshire. McBride's development plan is very dense and leaves very little grass. When McBride first made the resoning proposal, I received a copy of it in the mail because I live so close to Tower T. The proposal includes retention pond that is right at the backyards of the homes on New Hampshire, right at their backyards. There are a couple of reasons why this is bad. As you know, some years, we get some really heavy spring rains here in the St. Louis area, and we get a fair bit of flooding when that happens. And retention ponds only hold a limited amount of runoff. When it goes very rainy spring seasons, the retention pond could fill up and could overflow, and when it overflows, where will the water go? The homes on New Hampshire and East Yorkshire. It's not for the people who live there to put their houses in that position. Also, retention ponds are something of a nuisance. They are notorious mosquito producers. If ever retention pond by you, you often have swarms of mosquitoes. Sometimes retention ponds stink. They get that rotten swamp smell. How would you like if a retention pond right up by your backyard? It's very unfair to do that to people who live on New Hampshire and East Yorkshire. So please don't rezone the property at Tower T from commercial sporting facility residential. Please look out for the good of our community, for the good of the people of Afton. Please vote against rezoning Tower T, and please consider purchasing the property and making it a park with golf and batting cages. The fees from the golf and batting cages could pay for the cost of the park. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tracy Conla.
So I wrote this, and I timed this, and it's exactly three minutes, so I will talk quickly. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. My name is Tracy Conla. I'm a St. Louis County resident, and I live in the fifth district, where I share a home with my husband and our two dogs and our two cats. I'm a social worker. I work in Clayton, and I'm a voter. For many years, I lived in the city. Two and a half years ago, we decided to move to Crestwood and purchase a home. We were very proud to become St. Louis County residents. We were delighted to move into a great school district, to have beautiful city parks, a wonderful transportation system, so many benefits. Last night, when I heard about the news about Fos being euthanized, I wasn't proud to be a St. Louis County citizen, and that made me really sad. So, more than that, I was afraid for my dogs, and I've never felt afraid for my dogs living in St. Louis County. I was more afraid when I lived in St. Louis City that they might get out and get run over or something like that. So Ziggy, my puppy, just turned one last month. I adopted him from stray rescue last July. All I could think about was what would happen to him if he dumped over our fence again, because he's getting taller, and he's running, and he's being a puppy. If he was taken to the county animal care and control, would he be safe? Would he be treated with the love and respect that I treat the stray rescue dogs and cats when I go and volunteer every week? I'm proud to be an active volunteer there. I care about dogs, I care about cats, I care about people. That's why I'm a social worker. Today, I stand with other county voters who are passionate about animal rescue and the humane treatment of stray animals. My puppy Ziggy was once a stray, and stray rescue rescued him, and so now he's in our home. He's never going to know anything but love, warmth, and the best vet care that my husband and I can afford. Fos deserved the same, and unfortunately, as it appears, and I don't have all the information, I wasn't there, but it doesn't seem like Fos got the best advocacy Fos could have gotten. So it's time for a change. I came today because I want to be a part of the solution. I don't have the full picture, I'm not a vet, I don't work in animal rescue. I'm just a volunteer who donates her weekend time because this is something I care about. So we have the resources and the knowledge for St. Louis County and the city to work together to become a no-kill region, but to do that, we have to work together. So let me know how I can help, because we can do better, we must do better, and we will do better if we work together. So I thank you for your time. So I was a little nervous, and I talked fast, but I saved us 30 seconds. If you have any questions for me, maybe I can email this to you, because I probably said it real fast, you may not have heard my story, but I am one of many stories here today, so thank you for that time.
Thanks, Tracy.
Next speaker is Judith Schneider.
Hi, my name is Judith Schneider, and I'm a resident of Crestwood. I've lived here for 25 years as a St. Louis County resident. I'm here to speak for Faust. It broke my heart to hear about him/her. It was a tragedy, and it shouldn't have happened, and I'm thinking that it showed a distinct failure of leadership. So my request, with so much due respect, and I know this is a hard job, but is that the director step down, and let's make a change? And if I can be part of the solution, I too am a volunteer at Stray and at Care St. Louis Downtown. I want to make this a no-kill region. Tell me how I can help. You've got my name and address. Please call me. Thank you.
Next speaker is Anna Cashel.
Hi, my name is Ann Cashel. Imagine being so weak and sick that you're nearly frozen to death. Imagine when a good Samaritan finds you and calls for help, when you feel someone lifts you and carry you inside to a safe place. Yes, I'm talking about Faust, a dog that stray rescue named after the remarkable man who found her and called them. Imagine being in a clinic to help you recover, being surrounded by people to treat you, but you're scared, and you're in pain, and you bite. Imagine the unimaginable. Suddenly, everything changes. You're taken to a shelter, confused, "What did I do? Are they going to help me get well?" Imagine you were taken there just to be put to your death. So many questions. This could have and should have been handled better. This poor, sweet dog was failed by humans once again. Why didn't St. Louis County return the dog to stray rescue or involve them more before this decision was made? Why was Faust killed so quickly? I was online last night, and I had people pleading to not kill this dog, and before I know it, the dog was already euthanized. It just seemed like a very quick snap decision, in my opinion and experience. This poor, sweet animal suffered so much, finally felt the love of being rescued, and ended up at a shelter being killed. I can't even imagine the fear and confusion that Faust had in her final moments.
Next speaker is Kyle Reese.
Hello, my name is Kyle Reese. I work for Transportation District Three. I'm a supervisor of our concrete crew. The reason I'm here is I want to give you kind of an idea of what we do during the wintertime as public works, first responders. In the last month in particular, we've been tasked with dealing with many snow-related events, from the historic snow about a month ago that yielded more than 10 inches to the ice storm that hit in the early morning of Sunday, this past Sunday. We are the people that respond first. Oftentimes, we are responding at great risk to ourselves. For instance, and pardon me, I've got this throat thing going on, I apologize. For instance, the AM snow shift, which works 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, was paged into work at 5:00 AM on Sunday morning, right as the roads were freezing over. Some of the veterans, like myself, woke up at 4:30 in the morning in preparation for the storm with the intent of allowing ourselves enough time to get to the district in the event of traffic accidents, or traffic or accidents. On Sunday, my drive usually takes about 30 minutes. It was about an hour and a half. While everyone else was being told to stay at home, we were on the roads getting to work because we had to, for public safety. You know, at the same time, the overnight shift was working diligently to treat the roads as best as they could. As everyone now knows, treating and driving on the icy roads is as difficult of a task as you can partake in. This isn't to complain, it's just to state the facts. We take great pride in the work that we do, and we'll do everything that we can to do it as well as we can. In the past, I've even stayed at a hotel at my own expense to make sure that I got into work the next day during snow. I did this again during, in January, when the snow hit. I'll do it every time, over and over again, to do the job. I am not the only one who does this kind of stuff. We do this, we make these sacrifices and these choices because we understand that our role is critical to public safety. We all will continue to do it proudly as well. A couple of months ago, members of the council stated that, and I'm paraphrasing here, it'd be in our best interest to come and talk to the council about what we do. It was stated during the budgetary meeting after a council meeting that it might just be what allows us to keep our jobs during this time of budgetary turmoil, stagnant property taxes that date back to 1984. So that's what we're here doing. The other reason that I wanted to talk is I wanted to talk about a particular issue that is experienced county workers, and which is very important to have experienced county workers, dealing with public safety issues. Much of our experienced workforce has left the county for better-paying jobs. Their replacements have done an amazing job, but the other municipalities are capitalizing off of the trading that we are providing, and they're luring our employees away by substantially better pay. It might go unnoticed, but we are the group that the county police calls upon when needed, whether that be for a tree blocking the road, a down stop sign, rock in the roadway, flooding, icing conditions, any miscellaneous item that the county police force doesn't have to take care of. We are on call and available to the police in the interest of public safety 24 hours a day, seven days a week, at all five transportation districts throughout the year, regardless of holiday, or family issue, or personal emergency. While we don't do the work the police do, not even close to public safety, we do a lot for public safety that goes unheralded, and I believe we deserve to be paid a competitive wage to match all the other municipalities. Thank you so much for your time.
Next speaker is Jeff Heine.
Hey, my name is Jeff Heine, with Single County Transportation District Manager of the West County Facility. I've been here in the past, as you all know. I think there's times here, now I need to speak more to what we just did in the last month. On, like Kyle was saying, we experienced some very extreme situations. On the January 11th, that storm ranked ninth in St. Louis history for 24-hour snow. On the 30th, we experienced a storm which had life-threatening cold. I patrol West County at night and make sure that our game plan is working with a particular storm. That was the only time in 34 years I instructed a supervisor to call on check on each driver through the night. You know, they're by themselves, you know, in that weather, something would happen, they don't have their cell phone, the radio doesn't work. It's tragic. So that's kind of what we were dealing with on something like that. It's very risky on what they do, and they know what they do, and we know what they do, and they elect to work here. So in the end, it's something that the frigid cold we had, the other day, it was like a flash freeze on the roads. Everything was fine, I was out there, and about 5:15, the roads just, the flash freeze, where the salt gets diluted and the road freezes like that. So there's nothing you can do other than, I've seen, it was like bumper cars. I watched cars spin around, hit off medians. Our trucks drivers, the big truck, had to back up hills and back down hills so they could spread salt behind them. So imagine being in a storm like that with ice, driving a truck with 10 tons of salt, backing down a hill, and if it wasn't for that, they would spin out, go in the ditch, or they would hit another vehicle. So that's how dangerous it was. It was just something that I'd never experienced. That ranks up pretty high in ice storms that I've seen, that quick. I patrol, I look at the forecast, or we look at the forecast, you know, it's so, it changes per snow. You know, if they say it's going to start as rain, we can't pre-treat. If it's going to start as snow, we're lucky enough, fortunate enough, we can go out and treat the roads beforehand. So everything, it's just, you have to predict or try and help every storm as best you can. We're very experienced in what we do, but on something like that, you can't control it. I mean, regardless of what you do, it cannot be controlled. It's a situation that we never want. We have new drivers, and getting back to, I've said this before, 50% of the drivers I have at my district, this is their first winter events. Four of those drivers have only had their driver's license to drive a car for three years. And we're putting these situations, we're training them, we're giving the best training we can, but on a situation like that, you know, there's nothing you can do. That 10-inch snow, they did an excellent job, they turned it around quick. I was proud how we handled the 10-inch snow and this ice. I don't believe we had any accidents. So to me, that's amazing, how that went. Okay, so just so you know, you've heard it before, and I think it played true, just this time alone, dealing with what we had, really says that I think our employees need to be paid a competitive wage for people that do the exact same thing. So, thank you.
Next speaker is Brad Brocklemeyer.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for having us here this evening. I just would like to reiterate what they're saying. If it wasn't for us out there taking care of the snow and the ice, emergency personnel, the police officers, wouldn't be able to get to people that need to help. Okay? I just recently came back to St. Louis County. I like working for the county. We do a lot of work. We work hard, but you've lost a lot of good personnel over the years, and it's because of the wage. They are correct when they say they go to other municipalities because they're paying a better wage, but I would like to stay here in St. Louis County and make it better. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Next speaker is Beth Wasserstrom.
Hello, everybody. Good evening, I'm Beth Wasserstrom, 9500 Crockett Drive, and I've been coming here for the last couple of months. You all know who I am. I'm a volunteer at the St. Louis County Animal Shelter. It should be clear from the most recent events and the continued volunteer correspondence, emails, meetings, media, and council appearances that something needs to change now. The volunteers were removed this month from helping with adoptions in January, and the adoption numbers immediately dropped by nearly 50 animals from the previous month. We're still continuing to struggle. The Department of Agriculture report was obtained last week and stated that there were 1,107 animals euthanized at county in 2018. Yes, we are an open-admission shelter, and zero euthanasia is unrealistic, but most of us can agree the loss of over 1,000 lives is simply unacceptable. That means approximately one out of every four dogs coming through our doors and nearly one out of every three cats ended up dead. Incidentally, the number of euthanized dogs reported to board members and volunteers was 291, not the 733 that was reported to the Department of Agriculture. So where is the 482-dog discrepancy? A rapidly increasing number of communities across the country are making a commitment to going no-kill, low-kill, or promoting maximal life savings. This doesn't mean zero deaths, but is an absolute dedication to the welfare of animals and community education. Saving lives becomes the solution, not the problem. Lives are not lost due to cost savings, space, ambivalence, retaliation, or lack of desire to utilize or find resources. Also, keep in mind shelters don't go no-kill without their communities also going no-kill. And clearly, this week, we've shown as a community in St. Louis, we're ready to go no-kill. I presented this to Chris and Sarah a couple of weeks ago, and I'd like to implore County Council to create an ordinance that would move us forward toward this maximal life-saving effort. Something's got to change. In addition to this ordinance, we are begging for your help to get the leadership that the animals deserve. We need the permanent director position posted. Enough with the excuse of an audit. It has been dragging on for months, delayed multiple times, and has increased from the original cost substantially. Soon, we are going to need an audit of the audit. Bottom line, we need a compassionate, dedicated individual at the helm of the shelter, a person who can maximize their relationship with volunteers, staff, and community partners through mutual respect and communication. We need an individual with experience who wants to educate the public, is passionate about animal welfare. We need someone who is a problem solver, not a problem creator, someone who is proactive, transparent, and humble. Thank you.
Final speaker this evening is Michael Burton.
Neil. Michael Burton, here. Good to see y'all. When I started coming here, you know, I was coming for Tower T. I never thought I would get involved in St. Louis politics. I didn't even know you guys existed. Sad but true. I never ran for student council, or worked for a campaign, and I surely never thought I could or would run for public office. I've been to Vegas far too many times with far too many photos taken of me. But today, I've gone out of my way normally to not talk about me, but today, I'm going to talk about me, if that's okay with y'all. When this all started, I had no idea where it would lead. I just did it, right? I just did it. And every week, I doused my hair with hairspray and slicked it back, and I starched my shirt, hoping that Hazel will think I'm cute and vote with me. But this is me. This is me. This is what you see on a daily basis. This is what you're going to see if you see me at Trader Joe's after work. And while many people from the Afton community wear suits to work, I'm a good And while many people from the Afton community wear suits to work, I'm a good representation of the community, a working-class community. I work with my hands. I lift heavy things on a daily basis, believe it or not. I get to create art. I get to make people happy. And on days when I'm really blessed, I get to teach people yoga. I'm not a lawyer, not a dentist, I don't have awards from child advocacy groups, I don't have my masters, not a police chief, I'm just me. I come from a working-class community. We didn't have the money to get a membership at Westbrook Country Club. We had Tower T. There are proposals out there, in the past, like Topgolf in Chesterfield, where the community didn't like the way that it looks, looked too much like Vegas. That's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about traffic, and water runoff, and overcrowded schools, and blasting of bedrock. That's what we're talking about here. And if you look at any development where residents have concerns, this development right here has every single one of them in it. Putting everything I said tonight aside, this isn't about me. This is about a community, and your decision to do what is right or wrong. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Michael.
No more speakers, Mr. Chair.
This concludes the public forum. Please proceed with the introduction of bills.
Bill number 40, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of $25,881.84 from the Missouri Department of Social Services, appropriating the same for support of the Kathy J. Wyman Shelter, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 41, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant from the University of Missouri-St. Louis of up to $373,506, appropriating funds received for reimbursement of expenses incurred from participation in the Safety and Justice Challenge Initiative, and authorizing execution of related documents. Bill number 42, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance, amending ordinance number 26,769 is amended by repealing and reenacting Section 1 pertaining to a grant from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for support of the Violent Death and Enhanced Opioid Surveillance Program. Bill number 43, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance appropriating and setting apart the sum of $1,075,005 from the unappropriate balance of the general fund for support of various personnel and vehicle costs related to the City of Wildwood Police Services Contract. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Fracture.
Bill number 270, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger for Councilmember Tracus.
Please hold Bill number 270.
Bill number 270 will be held.
Bill number 17, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
Move to hold Bill number 17.
Bill 17 will be held.
Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold.
Bill number 20 will be held.
Bill number 21, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold.
Bill number 21 will be held.
Bill number 35, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I'd like to hold Bill number 35, and wait until we have an understanding of the budget transfers and cuts that were made at the end of 2018, and to accommodate the 2019 budget. So, Bill number 35 will be held.
Bill number 36, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill number 36.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Bill number 36 is perfected.
Bill number 37, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill number 37.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Bill number 37 is perfected.
Bill number 38, introduced by Councilmembers Walton, Gray, and Page.
Move to perfect Bill number 38.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Bill number 38 is perfected.
Bill number 39, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect Bill number 39. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Bill number 39 is perfected. Final passage.
Bill number 339, introduced by Councilmembers Walton, Gray, and Page. Mr. Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 339, introduced by Councilmembers Walton, Gray, and Page, and ordinance amending Chapter 202, Title 2, Saint Louis County Revised Ordinance since 1974, is amended personnel classified service by repealing and reenacting Sections 202.360, 202.365, and 202.366, each pertaining to various pay range structures.
So, this substitute is a 2.8% cost-of-living increase for all county employees in the merit system. Anybody have any questions? We've talked about this for a while. Move for adoption of substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 339.
Second.
All in favor? Yes, go ahead.
Quick statement, please. This is for the purposes of the record. When we started talking about this bill, many of us understood and believed that there was a $16 million surplus left over from 2018 that would easily fund this. This bill's going to cost about $2 million. In the last two weeks, we've learned that that $16 million surplus went from $16 million to $9 million, and this past week, from $9 million to $4 million. So, we're perilously close to not having the sufficient funds from the surplus to cover this bill. Because I don't know what will happen between this week and next week, in terms of the continuing accounting from 2018. I just want the record clear that the original intent of the council was to provide these raises based on belief that we had sufficient funds to do so. And not saying I don't support it, I just want the public to be clear of the potential consequences of this measure. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilman Harder?
Yes, I too am concerned. I thought we had more money to do this with, and now we've just got notice before the meeting tonight that we don't have what we thought we had. So, I think, I think we need to come to a screeching halt for a few weeks to figure out what money we actually do have, before we commit to this, and about four or five other different pay changes and other expenditures. So, I would, I would like if we could hold this, until we can get some of these numbers under control, at least for a couple of weeks.
So, the only response that I have is that this is not an appropriation, this is an authority to change the pay scale. And we're hopeful that some of the departments can do this within their 2019 budget, and if they can't do it, then we'll come back and talk about it. We can continue to have this conversation before we finally pass the bill, but we could adopt the substitute tonight, recognizing it as the vehicle that's in front of us. But unfortunately, we're still waiting on a plain English description of the transfers that were made in the 2018 budget to, in 2018, to accommodate the 2019 budget restrictions that were passed by the council. And it's hard for us to even consider supplemental appropriations, till we understand what, what cuts were made with the funds that were originally appropriated by the council.
And that's my concern as well, and, you know, I could go ahead and accept the sub, but I think we need to step back and figure out where the money is, before we move forward.
Any other comments? Yes?
I just have problems with, as you say, bringing it to a screeching halt. I mean, I know we have to do something, we can't give money away that we don't have, but I think that we need an explanation of why money is disappearing. And all at the same time that the money's disappearing, we're seeing new staff added to the county executive staff in the tune of six figures. We have staff out here who are looking for raises, and should get a raise. They should have been included in Prop P, their Public Safety. I don't understand why we have to come to a screeching halt, because we don't know where the money is going. We need an explanation of where the money is. How does that much money disappear over the weekend?
Any other comments?
I concur.
Okay, I move for adoption of substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 339.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 339 is adopted. Move to hold substitute Bill number 1 for, Bill number 339 on the agenda, and that will be the order.
I have another comment.
Yes?
We keep holding this, and the employees are not going to get this pay raise retroactive. We keep holding this because of, as my opinion, one person who could explain all of this, and he's here, so why don't we get an explanation?
Are you insinuating me?
I'm not insinuating anything, I'm talking about...
Because I can tell you this, our budget director, Bill Miller, is our budget director here this evening. I can't see through the, I mean, if you guys are looking for an explanation with respect to the budget, I know Sam has been in regular and constant communication with Paul, and I think Paul would be very happy to describe, you know, where the accounting is for last year. And as you know, moving from 18 into 19, there is a, you know, there are always, there's always a lagging calculation, because the tax receipts and everything are coming in from last year. So, that affects the numbers. So, it's not like over a weekend, that, I mean, I think the premise of your question is, frankly, it's false. That's not what's going on. I mean, the numbers change from 18 into 19, because there's a continuous calculation of revenues coming in, and expenditures that have gone out. So, it's, there's no, as you said, there's no money that has, quote, disappeared. These are calculations that are year-to-year calculations, that we do every year, and that we've done every year for the last, you know, decades.
But why weren't they there when we did the budget? Why does it keep changing?
Well, they don't, actually, Hazel, they don't actually change. What changes is, you know, you don't have final numbers for 18 until you get into 19, because in 19, certain receipts that come in for 19 actually apply to 18. So, there's actually a lag in our ability to have a complete picture of 18 until you're well into 19. And that's something that has happened in St. Louis County, and it happens in every entity, and particularly governmental entities, including the state, probably every other county in our, in our state. It happens every year.
Okay, I have one other question.
And I understand your question, and I understand that there can be confusion, but this isn't something that is for one person to answer, it's really a phenomenon that occurs every single year.
But then, Steve, why are we in this crunch, when you're constantly hiring new people and creating new departments? We just created a new department with staffs.
Well, I like, well, I like you, just like your department, we have people come, and we have people go, and we have a budget that we have to live within. And every year, we live within our budget, just as you guys do. So, while people come and people go, you know, we hire people, and we, and people retire, just like every other department in St. Louis County. We have an attrition rate that's very similar to the rest of St. Louis County, it's about 15%. So, people come and people go, and we have to fill those spaces when people leave. So, that's, that explains that, but it's all within the budget that we're given, just as you guys, you know, are granted a budget every year as well.
But I think we calculated about six policy advisors during the budget, and I understand that you've hired two more. Why?
Well, because people left, and people are leaving. So, for instance, Steve LaRash left, and we hired someone to basically fill that spot and other spot, and other duties on the, on the executive staff, just as you guys have. I mean, we have, like I said, we have about a 15% attrition rate. Yeah, we have a 15% attrition rate, just like you do, and you guys are free to fill your staff, just as every other department and county government, just as we are, so that's, that's just what happened. But with respect to the numbers, you know, we calculate, and ultimately produce the certified financial statements, you know, later in the year, for 2018, for a reason. And that's because the first few months of 2019 actually count for receipts for 2018. So, that picture does change, and it very well could increase, you know, could decrease, but I think that's, you know, additional receipts would add to that number.
So, I think what we're looking for, Steve, is someone in your office to release the report, a plain English description of the transfers that were made to adopt the appropriation that was, was adopted in the budget bill, along with...
Yeah, there actually are transfers, but...
Along with the explanation of the encumbrances that appeared in the second report of the 2018 spending. There is a difference between the second report and the first report of about $12 million, and we'd like to understand why those encumbrances weren't posted on the first report. That was quite a surprising gap.
Yeah, and I think the person that you want to talk to is Paul Kreidler, the budget director. I think you've been talking with him, and I think he'd be happy to provide you with that information without any issue at all.
So, Paul told me that he had the answers to our questions, they were sitting on the ninth floor and waiting to be reviewed and released to us. Does that sound familiar?
No, not, not...
Maybe Bill's involved in that conversation, and he could review that information from Paul, and go ahead and release it to us, because we've got a lot of decisions to make here, about supplemental appropriations, about raises, and a lot of other business that's pending before the county, and we need that information to make those decisions. So, maybe by next week, we could have it? Okay? Okay, we'd like to have it by next week.
By next week, it was spent over the weekend.
It's a complicated question, I think it's reasonable to take a couple of weeks to answer it, but we've got enough time.
Yeah, just as a statement, and not so much an aside, it is complex, I think the questions that you had were all very good questions, and they're questions that have answers, but I think, it's my understanding that Paul is still compiling answers to those questions, and, like I said, I don't think that, with all of the various hearings that we had, I think probably hundreds of hours of hearings on the budget, you know, I don't think there's been a lack of information. I think he'd be very happy to provide you whatever you need, because we, you know, our departments need those supplementals, so we're happy to provide the info.
So, Paul tells me, Paul is the source of information, and Paul tells me that he's waiting for it to be released, so I guess Bill has that information, and is reviewing it, and will decide soon on when the council can see it.
And I don't know that that's the case, I don't think that that's the case, but I think he's still, you know, working on it.
I hope we get the information soon. Any other comments? Yes, go ahead.
The bill was filed, I filed the bill in December, now mid-February, and we're getting, we're talking about halting the bill, not just holding the bill. Notwithstanding what happened with the issue with the treasury, or with the report, I'm sorry, of the monies, we also didn't get adequate advice from the attorney's office or staff about this bill, which is one of the reasons why you had to implement a sub. So, there's also issues with us not having proper information when we request legislation. So, this bill probably would have passed several weeks ago, had that happened, and we not even, we would be dealing with this after the fact, because once again, we're just giving permission to appropriate funds, but not necessarily appropriating the funds. So, I don't, I don't think we should hold it too much longer, other than going through the normal process.
Okay, so let's be prepared to vote on this next week, and hopefully, we'll have the information we need to make a good decision. Next item?
Bill number 25, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage, Bill number 25.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, I'm sorry, roll call.
Councilmember Irving?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
One question, is this $2,700,000 in the budget?
This is a grant. Yeah, I know.
Has it been...
I have to ask the director of the Health Department, some grants are budgeted, and some are unbudgeted, but we're happy to receive them when they come. Would you like to speak?
This is entirely grant, all of the...
But you put this dollar amount in the, in your budget, correct?
The dollar amount is made out of our fully data grant.
The dollar amount is made out of our Holy Daddy Grant.
But where does this money come from?
It comes from the state. As liberals have a full budget specifically to this dollar amount that we will provide as part of the contract.
Okay.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number Twenty-Five, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Twenty-Five is finally passed.
Bill Number Twenty-Six, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of Bill Number Twenty-Six.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number Twenty-Six, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Twenty-Six is finally passed.
Bill Number Twenty-Seven, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of Bill Number Twenty-Seven.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number Twenty-Seven, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Twenty-Seven is finally passed.
Bill Number Twenty-Eight, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to hold Bill Number Twenty-Eight. Bill Number Twenty would be held. I'd like to vote on this next week, but we do need to review with the Police Department background for this legislation.
Bill Number Twenty-Nine, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move for final passage of Bill Number Twenty-Nine, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number Twenty-Nine, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Twenty-Nine is finally passed.
Bill Number Thirty, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of Bill Number Thirty?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number Thirty, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Thirty is finally passed.
Bill Number Thirty-One, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I'd like to take that up. Before I make a motion, I'd like to just point out that this, the next three bills are related to a development, subdivision development, which is attached to the existing Summer Chase subdivision in unincorporated St. Louis County outside of Fenton. This is one of those subdivisions that was a long time coming. It was very controversial when it first started. Councilwoman Wassinger actually took it up and worked with it, got the Planning Department involved and got the property owners involved, and then the development company, Rawls. And finally, everybody came to an agreement. Not everybody. There's probably a few people that still aren't going to be happy with new homes next to theirs. However, they worked out a lot of the issues. And so I wanted to thank all those different departments and county government that helped get it this far, as well as the residents of Summer Chase and the property owners that are selling their property. So with that said, I'd like to move for final passage of Bill Number Thirty-One.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number Thirty-One, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Thirty-One is finally passed.
Bill Number Thirty-Two, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Thirty-Two.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number Thirty-Two, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Thirty-Two is finally passed.
Bill Number Thirty-Three, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Thirty-Three.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number Thirty-Three, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Thirty-Three is finally passed.
Bill Number Thirty-Four, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Thirty-Four.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number Thirty-Four, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Thirty-Four is finally passed.
Moving on to resolutions, Mr. Chair, we have two this evening. Resolution Number One, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for the adoption of Resolution Number One.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray? Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Resolution Number One, there are seven ayes.
Resolution Number One is adopted.
Resolution Number Two, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
First of all, I would like to add Councilwoman Hazel Erby is co-sponsor. And secondly, I move for the adoption of Reso-, well, Resolution Number Two that I would like for you to read.
I'm sorry, is the co-sponsorship on one or two?
Two. And if you could read first and fourth and fifth, whereas, please.
Okay. Resolution Number Two, introduced by Councilmembers Walton, Councilmembers Walton Gray and Erby. Whereas Latasha Fox has opened a new Chick-fil-A restaurant in Florissant, which employs more than a hundred and forty people. It's part of the three-point-five-billion Chick-fil-A corporation, and it's the first of its kind in North St. Louis County.
Two, four, and five.
Whereas, and whereas minority and female business owners serve as role models for all our youth and provide leadership opportunities and encouragement that help strengthen the community. And whereas Latasha is an African-American female whose positive vision for the future is evident as she models and promotes educational opportunities, including sports and extracurricular activities. And whereas it is appropriate for the council